We can talk about it. I need to talk about it. You can roll it.
Okay. We all signed.
My neighbors used to roll it, so what the hell.
All right. Good evening. Let's call the November 8th, 2016 meeting of the Acton School Committee to order at this time. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
What happened to the flag?
It's over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's my grandson.
Got in hot water.
Oh, really? Right there.
You know what? You know what? Keep my mind near yours. He does. Look at that face.
Okay. Any comments from the public?
No public.
All right, then. Any adjustments to the agenda?
There are not, and we will be going into a brief executive session at the end of this public meeting.
Okay. Then we're going to move right on with our celebration of learning with Patty Demarest.
Well, actually, we're featuring the Sylvia Emery Show tonight because I don't have half a brain anymore, and I did not get my kids in here, but kindergarten is so entertaining, you're going to love it anyway. This is PLTW, the Project Lead the Way Science Program that we're doing now, and this is their structure and function. I believe this is one of their activities. Every module has three activities, a project, and a problem. So I'm pretty sure this is Jack and the Bean stuff that we're going to see. Wait till you get to the big battle. Please play. The structure they're creating had to hold a plastic egg.
Three little pigs.
Yes.
These are straw houses. Surprise! Sylvia told me they each had a bag of materials. Stickers and stuff. You'll start seeing the wolf in there.
Yeah, so.
He's the real test. Lots of hot air. Something nice to do with. It's a pocket that goes on a hair dryer. It's like the coolest thing. Gets out of blast.
What an idea.
Very cute. So, the whole... I wanted to show you one thing from PLTW. It's right here. It's kind of my desktop is messy looking. But this process, ask, explore, model, evaluate, and explain, is the design process that they use on every module. So they have to actually draw their design. They have to compare them with a partner to see whether they want to use just one or the other, or pieces of each other's. Then they have to actually build the model. They have to test it, see whether or not it could be changed in a different way. And then they have to be able to explain what they've done and why they did what they did. So I think Sylvia and I, our biggest aha moment was the kids' expressions and the engagement. Even as tricky as some classes can be, the kids are engaged, they're involved, and they're learning, and they're remembering. So, you know, we're loving PLTW. Some people have, you know, started it more than others, but everyone is getting involved in it, and I think it's really going to help our MBA scores for science for fifth grade. So we were pretty excited. So thank you, Sylvia.
Very good.
Good. A lot of ingenuity there for kindergarten.
Yeah.
Really.
Yeah. And they do it all. I mean, we facilitate. We do what we need to do, but then you just let them, you know, and so I have to do this so that I don't... And I let them go, and they come up with some of the really coolest stuff. So it's nice to watch if you ever want to come in and watch it. It's pretty interesting.
Patty has taken a super leadership role in the school for helping everybody, the staff, learn how to work through the Project Lead the Way modules. She and two others went away for training this summer.
Yep. Riley and Norma.
Riley and Norma, and they all came back with their Project Lead the Way shirts. It was very professional, and Patty has been helping the three-through-five cohort put the pieces together, and she's just done a stellar job. And also, another thing about Patty you need to know is she's just been a gem for me because this is my first go with K- through, pre-K through five, and I've learned so much from Patty this year, and I really appreciate it. She's just done a bang-up job all the way around, so I wanted you guys to know that.
Anybody have any questions, Farah? Everybody? Well, it's nice to see that when we went through all the process last year of getting this into place, it's nice to see the results of implementing the program, and it's nice to have a chance to observe what some of the things are that they actually do.
Yeah. One of the really exciting things that will come up at the end of the year will be the two robotics modules that fifth grade is doing, because the company that we got the grant from wants to be in here and be part of this, see it, take pictures, and things. So that is going to be very exciting because they're excited to see.
That was the STEM grant, or STEAM?
It's, yeah, it's where we got... And I can't...
No, but it was the science technology, that one?
Yes. And we ended up with all that robotics stuff, which is very, it's very cool down in our Lowe's storage room with all our shelving. But yeah, it's really, it's going to be great. It's a little nerve-wracking. Artie told Sandra, get some of the older kids in there.
To help, yeah.
Who have done the Lego robotics and things, so she's already on board with getting them in there to help out.
Yeah.
You know, so it's very exciting, and it's my understanding from PLTW that we will have visitors in the springtime as one of only, I believe, four schools in the state of Maine who are already doing PLTW.
Yep, cool.
Two of them way up north, and there's us and Wyndham. So I believe we will have visitors, which is kind of exciting.
That's good.
Other schools, so.
Nice.
Very good.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That was great.
Thanks.
Okay, and we're going on to recognition.
Yes, the recognition for tonight is, it's my pleasure to recognize Jennifer Goodwin. Yeah! So much I wanted to say that I don't usually write these things out, but I started thinking about Jen, and I started putting paper and I've got a whole page here.
Thanks.
I'm telling you, Jen serves as our librarian, student council advisor, and secretary to the school committee. Jen created a fabulous book fair a couple of weeks ago. It was pirate-themed, and it was Family Night was filled with pirate-themed snacks, complete with seawater to drink. Jen was appropriately dressed as a pirate every day of the week, and the kids got quite a kick out of it. The book fair generated $1,481.32 to spend on updating our school collection. In addition, Acton Elementary School also received funds due to Jen attending a workshop over the summer, holding a family night, promoting All for Books. The grand total of the Scholastic bucks is $1,629.45, thanks to Jen's great efforts. Jen facilitated the student council voting last week and had her first meeting with the new student council yesterday after school. And one other thing about Jennifer Goodwin, she earned her Bachelor of Arts, majoring in Library, Science, and Media, and minoring in Elementary Education, graduating summa cum laude from Ashford University this September.
And did you say you were third in 12,000?
Yeah.
You were the third? Like, one, two, three.
Third.
Third top.
Imagine that, huh?
Congrats!
Jen's also a member of the International Golden Key Honor Society, and in speaking with Jen about the challenge in completing a college degree, she said, and this is a quote, "What a beautiful adventure I had completing that chapter in my life, and I'm nervous and thrilled to be embarking on my master's in library sciences as I continue to learn and grow along with the students." I think that's just awesome, so.
Very nice.
Jen's a pretty special person here at AES, and I just want to make sure we took a minute to recognize her.
Yeah.
Congratulations on your degree.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Did you write all that down by yourself? Nope.
Take the notes.
There you go. Don't be humble.
Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda, and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
We should mention that...
We should mention that Kevin was planning to be with us by Skype tonight, but his flight got detained, and so kind of messed his schedule up, so he's not able to be Skyped in with us tonight. He did send some, in some responses to John, so.
He did. He didn't have any particular questions, but for transparency and Kevin not being here, I think we'll be having an upcoming conversation around rubrics. He's appreciated and recognized the good work the staff has done with rubrics, and we'll probably be discussing an opportunity for students to exceed the standard, and what does it mean to exceed the standard versus move on to the next level standard. So that's some work that we'll probably be embarking on per his request, and probably good work that we should be doing.
All right. Any questions for any of the chair reports?
I have a question about the grant summary sheet. We can go to that for Kim. I don't know now. It's pretty spacious. It's somewhere amongst the papers. Right. So it says budget. You got that, Kim?
Mm-hmm.
It says budgeted 1617, then the actual, and then what is it? What does that mean?
Budget minus, the budget minus the actual, so what you have left.
So we have that much left?
These are new. These are, these are starting this year.
Oh, okay.
Don't do that. Basically, what you're looking at is, because every year we get local allocation funds. I worked really hard with Nicole. We had a carryover from June, and we moved things around so that we could use it for tuition and transportation, which were costs that we were incurring, and that cleared up the balance from last year's grant. So we used up all of the local allocation from last year's grant, and so now we're starting in with the new one with this year, and we revamped how we are... Because you can see on your sheet, you have a total for extended school year, out-of-district instruction, and out-of-district transportation. And once I learned from Nicole how everything is set up with the state and how they want it reported to make it easier for her to report back, because it has to be a two-person thing, I set up the spreadsheet so it matches how the state actually does things, which going forward with not only the auditor, but for Nicole and for the state, it'll be a quick, you know, just...
All right, so I wasn't sure if, I don't remember seeing something like this before, so that's why.
That is correct.
Okay.
But I was, instead of like doing individual summary sheets like I had before, I was, what I wanted to do here was show you, okay, this is what we have left for this grant. The pre-K grant, we allocated all of that for speech, okay, for the pre-K kids. The literacy grant, you already know, that's basically a teacher. The Title II is all PD and training, and the rural grant will be based on what Mr. Ross would like to use with the rural grant, but there's specific areas that it can only be used for. And the other two, the PD-PG grant and the high school diploma grants, those are funds that we've received from the state already, and we can use them only for specific things, you know, for specific purposes. So Project Lead the Way, or, you know, diploma, you know, so, and pretty much, they'll be gone June. So, but we're, you know, we're trying to use this, and at the same time, we want to make sure that we can close out these grants at the end of June, the best that we can. Extended school year will be carried over to cover for the summer, but we've done it a little bit differently. We'll accrue it, and that way it'll close it out. And, yeah.
So the small rural grant is used for what? Can you name specifically?
Basically, the rural grant can be used specifically for technology, professional development, student programs.
So it has to go to the student, it sounds like?
It can't go to personnel.
Right.
So we can't have a person. You can't use it on people.
You start using it for people, you start using...
No, I just didn't know, because sometimes you can use it for support, but...
You can't use it to supplant the operating budget. You can use it...
Well, like, in this year, because I was hoping you'd follow up, but I didn't, I don't remember if I saw something about the large class that we have, and you were going to pull from here and there. So that's why I didn't know, like, a grant could be used to help support the students, but I didn't know. So how is that working?
How is the...
The one class that was large.
Correct. We're going to talk about that a little bit later, too. That's one of the personnel things we'll talk about.
Okay.
But to answer your question, what have we done? Is I worked with the staff to find out who had some time in their day to help out in the class. And I now have four different adults rotating in, and instead of having the adults in the classroom, because then we have 27 students and four adults, we've taken the class and divided it into 2A and 2B. So part of the class, 2A or 2B, would go with one of the specialists and go and do art while our teachers working on academic skills, and then they would just rotate back in. We found a group of 12 and 13, or 13 and 14, to work better than it is to try to have more adults in the room.
Yeah.
So, so far, so good. It seems to be a placeholder, but we'll get in depth with that later.
I know, but when you see the grant money sitting there, you go...
Right. How could we use that? Unfortunately, that is not one of the grants we could use for, like, ed tech support.
Yep.
Yeah. Good question.
That's all my questions.
Any other questions? While any of the reports? Okay, then let's move on to number seven. Progress monitoring reports.
The 7-1, Francine Young will present to us what we've done with professional development thus far via PowerPoints. I'll move again.
So I just put together a quick summary of what we've done so far. I tried to sort them out according to the...
Seven areas of focus.
Seven areas of focus, thank you. So first one we have is just academic achievement. So we've been working on creating trackers from the curriculum maps that supports the school policy in establishing clear principles and the guidelines, and teachers are able to go in and just kind of manipulate things specifically to meet the groups of students' needs. So we have the curriculum instruction assessment, reporting, all working together. The educator evaluation, that's where John comes into play. I do not do that. And then the professional learning is where I'm able to look and see where teachers may be struggling or having a difficult time, and then I can go in and give them a boost when they need it. NWEA, we went over those last month with the scores. I'm still trying to figure out the answer to Kevin's question about the discrepancy with second grade. Hopefully, I'll figure that out. Back to Mastery Connect, we've modified the tracker permissions so that teachers who are sharing students can work, you know, see where students are in relation to where, into the content areas that they're covering. So then students who are working within, I guess, grade-level norms are being challenged. Those who we can see are being maybe not challenged enough, teachers can work in some extra challenging things for them to do, and then further school progress with implementation of the PBL model. Non-academic things, we had CPR training in October. We're going to do mandated reporter training tomorrow during our ERD, and safety care and intervention support is kind of an ongoing thing. Is it next week?
Yeah, Monday and Tuesday next week.
Monday and Tuesday of next week, we have four...
Five.
Five. Four. Five people who are going to receive the safety care training. So then I think gradually, we're hoping that we can get most of the faculty and staff trained, so at least everybody's on the same page with what strategies we should use with students who are having a difficult time, and we need to, when we need to use those interventions. For educational environment, we've, at your request, we've been working at figuring out the transitional exhibitions. So in cohorts, teachers have been looking at those and kind of generating some ideas that might work at each level while giving students some autonomy and choosing when they get towards the upper grades, and focusing on some content area things that are cross-curricular, I think, with the lower grades, and they can kind of guide their, create their own projects, I think, is where we might end up, but we're still in the preliminary stages of planning, those are figuring it out. With Mastery Connect, again, there's mindful videos that are available through the program, and parents and students can go in and see how they can log in and check out different progresses for everybody, and the parent portal has access to the mindful videos, and that kind of improves the communication between the school and the parents on how we're using that program to support the PBL model.
Do you know when a parent has logged into Mastery Connect?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes. Thank you for answering so fast. Yeah, it's, there's a date that shows their last login.
Okay. So there's a way to kind of track how much it's being used within the whole school?
For organizational systems, we have our mastery expectations. We had a faculty conversation about having term progress versus end-of-year progress, since we should be building, you know, students should be learning across the whole spectrum of the year towards our end-of-year expectations, and just how those smaller terms work towards that larger goal. And we've been organizing and reviewing the data just to make sure that our processes fit the PBL model most effectively for what we're doing. Building and using rubrics effectively and efficiently, and that's, that's been done mostly within cohorts, and me running from one to the other, and Mike doing a lot of support and getting things, working on common language, and having more positive expectations voiced. So when students do look at those, it's not, you failed at this, just you didn't meet this goal. So we've done some manipulation of the vocabulary to make it more supportive of their progress, of students' progress. Communications, safety care versus classroom support, and sometimes we just, students are having a difficult, just a difficult day, and sometimes just difficult personalities clash, and we've been dealing with how to effectively notify support when it's needed so that that help is there in an appropriate manner. If somebody's just being defiant and having a bad day, we don't need four adults to kind of converge and scare the bejesus out of them, but if somebody's really not having a good time, and we need to make sure that they're in a safe spot, we're just determining what those parameters were for determining which kind of a call that you would need. And then staff development, a lot of Mastery Connect stuff. For the instructional coaching schedule, I, at the beginning of the year, teachers did quite a few surveys for me, so I was able to structure both the professional development for ERDs and what teachers need individually in their classrooms. I elicit feedback from teachers both personally and during faculty meetings, and use that to try to make sure I'm constantly moving towards ERD sessions that fit faculty needs, and then classroom visits and teacher consultations. And I have, I could just create a calendar for each month, and teachers just put in a time on each date that they would like me to come by, and I just make sure that I fit into their schedules, so I'm not interrupting them, I'm not getting in the way, but I'm offering the support that they need when they need it, and they know where to find me. So then for discussion, we've been talking about altering our achievement language, like I spoke of before with the rubrics, to make sure it's more positive, and we're able to get students focused on rising to expectations rather than just kind of checking something off of a list, but actually incorporating those skills so that they can improve steadily. And this is our schedule for November. Last week, we had a general faculty... Last week, we had a general faculty meeting and cohorts met to talk about those transitional exhibitions and the capstone for the eighth grade. This week, we're going to do mandated reporter training. Next week, since it is close to the end of the first trimester, that'll just be PLC cohort individual classroom time. And on the 30th, we have a 90-minute Mastery Connect web training that is part of our contract we have with them, and we're going to focus on analyzing data and using that data to plan efficiently. That's the end of it.
Sounds busy.
Yes. Gets me out of trouble if I'm busy.
Now, this may not be the time to ask, but you were kind of the head honcho here, maybe, a few days ago, were you? Or is that coming up?
It's coming up.
Were you going to be the principal of the school and all that?
Next two days.
The next two days.
Okay. So you're all set with that?
Yes.
You're prepared?
Yes.
Okay.
She's received excellent professional development on that.
That's what I needed to know.
But I'm very sure that I will have all the help and support.
Okay.
I'm not going to, I don't have to go it alone.
I just want to make sure.
Our hope is to have Francine do something similar, perhaps halfway through the school year, because it's still pretty early for professional development. And although there's a body of research that suggests that excellent professional development impacts student achievement, it's very difficult to say what professional development actually impacted student achievement in which area. So when we get halfway through the year, I'm hoping that we can look at student progress and look at the professional development we've offered and make some connections for you when we've had a little more time with our kids.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Let's move on to MEA science scores.
Sure, I'll take that one. I sent you the MEA scores in your weekly update as well as it's in the agenda item 7-2. This is for last year's, this is 2015-16, so that would be grades five and eight, so that would be this year's sixth graders and freshmen. So last year's fifth and eighth is this year's sixth grade and freshmen. Know that the main, the MEA science, we call it the Science Augmentation Exam, happens in five and in grades eight and also in grade 11 at the high school level, but the MEA for literacy and numeracy happens for grades three through eight, and that happens in March. I don't have any data yet on that. I know that Francine and Mike went to a data training last week, and can either of you help me with when we may see the English Language Arts and the math data? I know we have the science in front of us, but when would we expect to know how Acton kids did on those assessments?
We're working on release dates.
Okay.
They didn't give us an exact date.
They didn't.
They were letting us beta test basically the current portal using the science data because it's the most accurate and most longevity data that we have, because it hasn't changed. Assessment portals or assessment tools has been the same. So ELA data is still up there as far as the data.
And fewer kids are assessed in science because it's only offered at fifth, eighth, and 11th grades. That can be helpful, too. So there's a new, the state's made some major changes in technology, one of them being the way that the state lets us know how our students do in statewide assessments. Both Francine and Mike are going to be our point of contact to learn that tactical side of how they, what they tell us. What's really interesting is, as the superintendent principal, I can dig all the way down to the individual student and see how they did. We're reporting out aggregate data to you as a group of students, but we can look and we can set up interventions based on statewide assessments for any student in the Acton School Department, which is pretty exciting. So the students are assessed, and there's really four different codes. It's well below state expectations, below state expectations, at state expectations, and above state expectations. And due to our small student population, if you go on the web and look up this data, you'll see that Acton has a little asterisk next to it. And that's because the group of students that were tested had 16 or fewer students. There's several other schools in the state of Maine that have asterisks as well, which is interesting, that goes to show that there are many small schools in the state of Maine where there are 16, 17 or more students that are assessed in any of these assessments than the numbers are given as well below, below, at, or above. So there wasn't any information really for Acton, so Francine and I really dug into it to be able to report out to you. And in the fifth grade, we had 15, this year's sixth graders, there were 15 students at grade five. And the following results, 7%, which is really, one student is 7% of the group, that's how small the group is, came in with the well below. Six students below the state expectation. Eight students are at state expectations, and there were no students in that cohort that were above the state expectations. In grade eight, there were no students well below, there were no students below. There were 11 students representing 65% of the group at state expectations and six above state expectations or well above expectations, representing 35% of the group, which is, which is pretty interesting because in that group of kids that are now freshmen, there were also some students that had some fairly serious learning difficulties, let's just say, and they did quite well as a group. So overall, both grades, when you look at the students from Acton that were tested, 22% were at, below or well below, while the at and above group was 78%. And this did include special education students. So we can look at the aggregate data with or without special education students, so that last, both grades includes all of our kids. Statewide comparisons, in grade five, 37% well below or below state expectations and 63 scored at or above state expectations. Grade eight students outpaced other schools statewide by having no students at, well below, or below levels, again, which is, which is pretty good. And talking with Patty and looking at this data, I wasn't at the table when Project Lead the Way was brought to the school, but it was well thought out. It's clearly interactive, it's clearly engaging for all students. And when asked, how will this do with the state assessment, Patty nailed it and said they're aligned with the next-gen science standards, which is the national standards, and that is what the MEA is using as benchmarks to assess our kids. So it's my assumption that over time, our, our scores will only increase, and they're pretty good right now. So just wanted to give you that if you have any questions. Both Francine and I dug fairly deep. She dug a lot deeper than I did, and thank you for that.
Anybody have any questions?
No. No, I was pleased with everything.
I have good news.
Pretty good news, yeah.
All right then, let's go on to committee reports, and we'll begin with the Long Range Planning Committee.
We met this evening at 5:00. We discussed a few things. One of the things that we discussed was the PTG may possibly have a yard sale in the spring with some items that we are looking to dispose of. We still have quite a few desks kicking around, which we'd love to see go. The other thing that we talked about, and I'm not sure if we've discussed this at the committee level before or not, but we've, we've talked about it with the LRP, the small white storage building on this side of the building where the dumpsters are located. We're talking about possibility of building a new shed there, a little bit bigger, more user-friendly for storage. It would be used primarily for things like the band risers, tables and stuff like that that are kind of like overcrowding the cafeteria at the moment. So I'm in the process of putting together some numbers for that. And then the last item we discussed will come up under unfinished business, which is the discussion of the fire panel.
Anybody have any questions for the long-term, Long Range Planning Committee?
The other thing that came up while we were talking about the PTG was the trunk-or-treat event, which was quite awesome from what I understand. I wasn't there, but have heard a lot of people talking about it after the fact and saw some of the pictures, and it was a very well-attended and well-organized event.
Nice.
I've been to a lot of school events in my career, and I tell you, when I drove down the street, I came down with my son, I said, we got to check this out. So we drove down, and he's like, wow. And there were cars lined up everywhere. And then I came in and I'm like, this didn't even look like the place I go to work every day. I was just, I'm really blown away just telling you about it. We came in through the back, that's right, park, and I get down to this door here across from the caf, and there's a gorilla, there's a giraffe, and I think a snake or some sort of reptile, and they're jamming out. There's two guitars and a drum, and they're just playing this really cool music, and they're right in the doorway. So we have a band, and then we have kids all inside the school, and then you get out to the parking lot, and that's where all the cars are with all the setups. And it was, it was amazing. There was people everywhere and kids everywhere. It was just very cool, very cool. Now I know next year what I'm going to do. I'm like, okay, nobody's going to know Mr. Ross is. I'm just going to show up in something, so it was, it was really exciting. It was quite a community event.
Good. That's awesome. And because of trunk-or-treat, any of you who think you might have trick-or-treaters that bought candy that to keep it and eat it at home, I'll give it to all your hunters, either way. Okay, Policy Committee.
Well, I forgot what date we met.
We met a week ago Tuesday.
Yeah, and the main thing, well, that we looked at was the medical marijuana in schools, and the other thing was to set up a schedule of what, the updates of the policies needed to do. Anything behind 10 years had to be updated. That's what the plan is, to go through every single one of them and to try to update all of them. I mean, there's a ton of them because all brand-new ones keep coming forth. Everything seems to be an emergency, you know, so... But the one that we're bringing for tonight is the medical marijuana in schools. And we've scheduled dates, and I think they're on the back of this paper here, monthly.
Jeanette, is okay if I add to that? I know Kevin's not here. You may have mentioned that the overarching work that our committee needs to do is the proficiency-based learning policy has kind of trumped some things that are already in policy. I'll give you an example. At the middle school level, there's a policy that we worked on back in September. The standing policy was a student needed to be, to paraphrase, a C-average student to play in co-curricular activities and compete. Well, the middle school just moved to the 1 through 4 scale system like everybody else in the school, so that PBL policy kind of trumped that old policy, so we needed to come up with a working plan. We came up with one, and it works quite well as far as we know right now. There will be other policies that the PBL policy as an umbrella affect, so our first work is to go in, and most of them are probably going to be under the I section for instruction. And where those policies around instruction are impacted by the proficiency-based learning policy, we're going to need to change the language so that they mesh. That's step one. Step two, there are also some policies around supervision and evaluation of your administrative staff and professional staff, teachers. And the language in there has to do with, you know, a cycle and observations and a summative, and the school committee through state mandate has adopted the PPEG, Professional Growth and Evaluation Plan. So the Professional Growth and Evaluation Plan for myself as an administrator and say Patty as a teacher and, and for Jen as a teacher, those are really, they're not, they're in conflict a little bit right now. So that the new state law suggests we need to do X, we have a policy that says we need to do Y. The nice thing about that, and Kevin picked up on it, is we still have another year with the Professional Growth and Evaluation. We're in a pilot year. So the one that really matters is the one that's still in policy. So for a professional evaluation of the staff and when it comes to collective bargaining, all that would be under the, the policy that's in place, but we're moving to a place where professional growth is what we need to look at, and we need our policies to mirror that. And I speak for Kevin only because he said it in the meeting. We want to be careful with changing our local policies because the state is still in flux. This Professional Growth and Evaluation Plan may fall apart at the state level, and if it does, we don't want to have to go back and rewrite again and again. So he recommended that we kind of sit on that and wait and see what the state does. And then, of course, Jeanette picked up on the, there's many policies that are a decade or older, and we're just going to do a review, a review cycle on those, so that's kind of where we stand, that we did a lot of good work just a week ago, did I?
Was it?
Yeah. We have all of our dates for the year done.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
And you have a vote on one coming right up.
Yeah. Any questions for the Policy Committee? Okay, then let's move on to number nine, which is unfinished business, and that's approval of purchase for the fire panel.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion because, and in the motion, you'll hear the reasoning and where the money's coming from. So this is something the Long Range Planning has been talking about probably for definitely three years, about updating the fire panel. Right now, the fire panel will detect, you know, the alarm will go off if there's smoke or whatever right in the building. However, it doesn't say where in the building or, you know... So anyway, that's just one of the things, when I heard that, that, you know, you know, not being sectioned off or being in zones. So we needed to update it. It's very old. So we want to, I want to make a motion that we approve up to $12,000 for the new fire panel to be funded by the Security and Safety Upgrade Reserve Fund, which has $8,931.30. And that would zero that out. And the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, which will take $3,068.70. And that's how we would fund it, but we're still going to see if we could come in less because it has to go out to bid.
Okay, so the motion from Mary has been to approve up to $12,000 for the new fire panel. And the explanation for the funding has been given as well. Somebody want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Been moved and seconded that we approve up to $12,000 for a new fire panel with the money coming from the Safety Reserve Fund and also from the capital, capital fund.
It's $8,000.
You could give that to Jen so she knows the amount.
Yeah, I just gave it to her.
Okay.
And $40,000 in the Capital Reserve Fund, is that the one you're looking at?
Yeah. Okay.
It was $40,000.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Or no? I just realized maybe unfinished business is a good place to put it as any, but we didn't approve our minutes tonight.
Well, it's in the consent agenda.
The minutes are in the consent agenda now? Okay, so we don't have to do it separately.
Yeah, 5:1.
Okay. All right, so they can be published. I just wanted to make sure we didn't, didn't miss that. Okay, let's go on then to new business, which is the first read for marijuana policy, medical marijuana in schools. NEPN slash NSBA code JLCDA. And if you want to memorize that, go right ahead.
Can you repeat it?
NEPN slash NSBA code JLCDA.
Thank you.
So we're looking to accept this policy tonight as a first read.
All right, so my one question is, if we don't have this happening, why even bring this up? Number two, F, section F on the second page, it says, "In a private space and under the supervision of an administrator." Wouldn't it be our full-time nurse? Is she considered an administrator? She's just a nurse, so I would try to...
I can comment on both if that's okay. I can comment on the why are we bringing it up? This, and the reason why Judy, his chair, went through the full code is we don't have anything like this in policy. The reason we're bringing it up is we need, state mandate, we have to have a policy. We have to have a policy in place in case if an Acton student or any student who's coming to Acton School uses medical marijuana as part of their health plan at home, and let's just say for, I'll throw out for seizures or something like that. And that student needs to have that during the school day under the auspices of a medical provider. So if that were to happen, we need a policy in place for that. And under state law, whether we have a student or not, we have to have a policy in place. So this is the boilerplate of Maine school management's blanket policy for all schools in Maine. The question you ask is a good one about F. It is not under the supervision of a nurse, but of an administrator. And I believe it was Carol Wendell who gave me some information from our attorneys who specifically said, keep it out of the nurse's office, that this is something that the parent needs to bring to the student, therefore, it's not kept, it's not like an ADG... parent needs to bring to the student, therefore, it's not kept, it's not like an A D D medicine or anything like that, that might be kept in a brown container in a locked cabinet in the nurse's office, because the parent needs to bring it in, sign it, and meet with an administrator, and give that in a non-smokable form to their child. It shouldn't be part of the practice of the nurse. So we put in, we made it an administrator, other schools are adopting other policies, but I don't know that any school that has at least consulted with Drummond and Woodson is having their nurse do it.
No, I know this is blanket, the way they throw these at us, but, of an administrator. So who here, it would just be Francine now, too?
It could be in lieu of me, when she's in proxy, but I'm here almost all the time. So here's how it would probably play out, Mary, I've thought about this, because I thought, well, so, okay, what am I gonna do? So if this were to occur with any of our students, I would ask the parent to meet with me and go over all of the information in regards to the fact that this is above board. And once that process has been established, and it seems like it's correct, what I would do is I would work with the parent, say, "At what frequency does your student need this? And at what times?" And we'd make arrangements for that parent to come in and probably use one of the, one of the private spaces, either my office, the conference room, or the social worker's office, and keep it at the front of the building and in that area only with the student. And I believe, Jeanette, we also talked about ensuring that the administrator kind of sticks around during that process as well, because we believe it's just an oral, it's probably gonna be like a pill or something.
Right, to observe.
And we just kind of thought that was just prudent for us, to have the administrator be around.
No, I just don't know why the nurse shouldn't be there. It's a medical problem.
Right.
The nurse should be, here in Acton, Maine.
Right.
Instead, you know, if you're somewhere else...
I will tell you, I think I know why, not being the attorney, but I think I recall from speaking with Carol and looking at what the attorney's recommendation is on this, marijuana as a scheduled drug is still illegal under federal law. Marijuana in the state of Maine is not illegal under state law, and people in the state of Maine with proper medical authority can have access to medical marijuana, therefore, so can their children. And because Carol is licensed under, as a medical provider, she doesn't want her license anywhere near something that might be...
Okay.
So therefore, I don't have a medical license, I'm an administrator, and under state law, this is fine. So that's, I think, why we're keeping it, and most schools are keeping it out of the nurse's office.
Yeah, and she had checked with Drummond and Woodson, too.
Right. She was in the meeting with us.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the other thing that dawned on me now, it doesn't say anything here about how this comes in the building, what kind of a container, is it a prescription-written container? It doesn't matter, the person could just carry this in in an envelope, and...
Well, I know, but you laugh, you know, she may not bring...
Yeah.
I don't know, I just...
I don't know how it's partitioned out.
You know, like if you were prescribed Percocet.
Correct.
You know, you'd have to have it in a container, you can't just have it in an envelope.
That said, the person's name, the person's date of birth, the doctor who prescribed it, a label.
A label. Now, it's coming from a nurse, you know, it should be labeled.
I mean, I'm trying to pick out the words that it might say that.
No, it doesn't say it.
There's a form, the medical form that we talked about, too, Jeanette, that isn't in this piece, that I sit and speak with the parent, covers most all of those questions, that Carol gave us the recommended form, and Kevin mentioned, and that would be like an R, it's a form that goes with a policy, and that we need to put that form in with this policy. So the front-end work of sitting with the parent and having that conversation, I can't imagine we'd have many students, but we have our first one, that's gonna be our test case. And I know little to nothing about medical marijuana, so I wouldn't, I couldn't tell you how it's gonna show up either, whether it's gonna be in a prescription drug bottle, or whether it's going to be in something that looks like a pack of gum, I don't know.
But this says that it's coming with the parent.
Right, yep.
It's non-smokable.
Right.
And the parent, and they're gonna meet right in...
Correct.
The office, someplace. So I don't think the actual container is such an issue, as far as making sure that it's a single dose, and...
Well, it might not be, I'm just reading between the lines, you see, it doesn't...
Yep.
But you would find out ahead of time what form it would be in that the student would be taking, whether it was a pill, or...
Knowing me, I would probably ask them to bring in a sample, so I could see it, and talk with them, even when they're not administering it, so I know what I'm looking at the first time we administer something.
They're little round tan things like that.
Now, how does she know?
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to accept this policy for...
I don't think we need motions.
For a first read.
Do we? We just say it's a first read? We do say motion?
We usually accept it as a first read.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, let's move on to ten-two, which is the budget schedule.
There is no schedule.
We didn't have a chance to speak, we do have workshop hour next Tuesday at four, so we'll be able to get a news one.
Okay.
Next Tuesday at four.
Workshop, okay. Working on a, working on a budget schedule, and speaking with, I've spoken with John, and also with Kim, and also with Jennifer at the town hall, and also with Elise, on trying to decide what would be the best process for us to do our budget this year. There was some talk last year about combining our budget with the town budget in June, which would make that town meeting quite lengthy, I think people would maybe get up and leave before, especially unless we were very first on it. So the discussion was that by having our own town meeting, as we have in the past, as we've done for so many years, we would better be able to explain the budget, get the budget booklets out ahead of time, so that people have a chance to see it before the town meeting, have the budget there to be presented, each section as we go through, and so that when people were ready to vote on it at the end of that town meeting, they would have a good idea of what the money was being spent on, and so forth. So, we're just waiting, because I think the selectmen need to approve that, at least that's what we were told last year at town meeting, at our town meeting, that that would be up to the selectmen, but it appears like we might be looking to do our own, if the selectmen approve it, middle to latter part of May, which would give us a chance to have our insurance rates already, we might have a good idea on our E P S by then, and we'd have that by then, things that we haven't been able to have before. And we don't have to worry about the timing of it as much, because it doesn't have to be followed up by the referendum, which it has in the past, since we voted that out last year. So that's kind of what we're looking on, and we'll just wait, and you can just send me a yes or no, or whatever.
So your plan for the meeting is to present what you've been doing in this past full year, as far as the P L T W?
Not necessarily, I think our plan, that town meeting is based on budget for what's, what we're looking to do for next year. It'll be based on what we're doing for next year. And the justification for each of the areas of the budget would come from some of the things that we're doing now.
Right.
To continue with some of those initiatives. But it wouldn't necessarily be a summary of what we've done, it would be an explanation of what we need to keep going forward in the direction that we're going, and why we need it, and the background material to support that.
And pass the budget at that same time.
And then we would vote on the budget, we'd vote on the articles on that same night, the same as we have before. Yep.
And how long do you think that presentation?
We've done it every year in some form or other, I don't think we did it last year, but it's been done in PowerPoint, it's been done in different, and that would really pretty much be up to what John decided, how he decided to do it, but I would say the presentation itself, before we actually got into the articles, would probably be maybe twenty minutes, something like that, twenty minutes, whatever he comes up with, however long or short it might be. But it will just take each of, it'll give you a chance to see what the article is about, number one, like when you get to Article A, or whatever it is, Article One, it'll give you a chance to see what's included in that article, and why we're asking for the amount of money in that particular article. And it's just, gives you a better total understanding of what the money is being spent for, and why the money is being requested for different things, and what's already being done with money in that account, so.
And that will be it, we won't be at town meeting on Saturday with the school budget combined, like it used to be years ago.
But it could go that way, I would prefer that way.
You do?
Yeah. To have one meeting like we used to have, it was one meeting the second Saturday of the month, we always knew when it was, people planned it, we knew it would be a full day, you know, we had different groups that would have lunch, you know, prepared, and, you know, it's just, so, I mean, you could go back to the way we did it, school articles come first, because that'll bring the crowds out, and then hopefully the crowds stay for the rest of the meeting, and, because, do you remember that, when we used to meet? We actually met in the fire department, I remember one time, I guess they were...
Yeah, I wasn't here yet.
Yeah.
I think, I think, too, that...
They did meet there when it was brand new.
I, you know, my, one of my reasons for wanting to stick with the way we've been doing it is because I think it would be easier to get parents to come out on a Tuesday night than it would to come out on a Saturday morning in June. I mean, that's, just thinking of, and really, we want the parents to be informed as well, as well as support the budget, but we want them to be informed as well as what's going on, so.
And then years ago, it used to be, I mean, there were over a hundred and fifty people that would show the town meeting, and now, what do they get, less than a hundred at the regular town meeting on a Saturday?
Forty.
Huh?
Forty.
Typically, what happens, what's been happening at town meeting for the last few years, and I always go to the regular town meeting in June, what's been happening is that people will come in, they'll come to the town meeting because they're interested in one particular article, or maybe two particular articles, and they will stick with the budget until it gets to that article, they'll get up and speak their piece on the article, and after that article is voted on, you'll see a lot of people just get up and leave. So, I, you know, I think, I think that the process that we've been doing, even though it's been a pain because of the referendum and because of the timeframe, where we've been kind of squeezed to get it in, because the referendum has to come so many days after the, after the actual town meeting, and it's put Jennifer, Jennifer said she's perfectly, has absolutely no, no problems with doing something in May, because it's really the referendum that gives her the extra work and the extra expense.
We don't have the referendum any longer.
So.
Well, the other thing, too, is for us to do it in April, and with the ballot vote, we were flipping on either side of...
April vacation.
Vacation, right. And, which was making it difficult, and it's also the same time that the town of Acton puts their tax bills out, so that was like even more work for Jennifer, so I can understand why May would be a lot better for her, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's just a discussion, stuff for discussion, we'll wait and see if the, if the selectmen, what their suggestion might be when they come back to us, and then we'll go ahead and develop our budget schedule from that. We should be able to start on that, maybe next week, after we hear from Elise. All right, anything else?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, and I don't know what time it is, can't see.
Per one.
Seven oh seven. At seven oh seven. Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?